Call the zoning commission regular meeting of September 18th to order. We have, Donna is not here, right? We didn't, she didn't say that she wasn't.
I did not get a response.
Okay.
See what?
Well, let's see, one point David said for her since it's his first meeting or second.
I don't know who David is.
David, oh.
Could you introduce him?
Yes.
I would introduce him.
Thank you.
Yes.
This happens to me.
David Moore is replacing Melissa.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Everybody knew David.
And he is, he's in the Democratic Town Committee and was chairman until last April, I guess.
Nice to meet you.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Moore has visited me and we did a quick little intro into roles, responsibilities, and ethics and all that kind of stuff. sped up speed as much as we could.
Good, okay. I didn't see any minutes in the Dropbox. It says we're going to approve the minutes.
There's two minutes in there.
Yeah, there are different ones in the minutes.
Okay.
Minutes for July 17th and minutes for September 6th.
Okay. Let's do minute of July 17th.
Maybe those were, those were some changes. Those, really what we did was, really kind of just deleted those confusing sections because remember the point of the, point of minutes really to reflect broadly what you've discussed, but it's about action. The action stuff, so, yeah, something was confusing, deleted most of them.
Anybody want to move the acceptance of the minutes?
Well, which one are we starting with?
It's the 17th, the July meeting.
July 17th.
Yes.
Well, I, I could.
Okay, go ahead.
Well, one is pretty straightforward. There's a sequence, line 163, 167, my name is misspelled, there's a typo there, it doesn't have two Ts in there. I'm in there 50 other times with two Ts and I wish it was just not. So, I was a little surprised, but I wanted to just raise another point that's not earth-shaking, but line 312, I looked at this, line 312, it talks about, it has to do with the grismell thing, and the language refers to reduce parking and blow up cactus on site. And I remember the discussion, I'm thinking, what is a blow up cactus? Blow up cactus, I'm thinking, you know, does it go up in pieces or what is it? And I'm suggesting that maybe not for now, it's not that important, but inflatable is a word that is clear.
Yeah, yeah.
Blow up is unclear at best, I think.
Any other comments?
No.
Diane? You're good?
We're going to approve the July 17th minutes as amended by Commissioner Elliott.
For a second?
Second.
Tony, you can second, all right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I abstain.
Okay. Five, nothing, no extension. Mr. Moore abstained. Uh, let's see, the minutes of September 6th.
I will move for the adoption of the minutes of September 6th. I will note that I was actually present, but not necessarily at the beginning of the meeting, given that I had given public comments at said meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I do have a couple of comments.
Go ahead.
George on line 90, I believe proper word should be affected with an A, not infected.
Well, that was tricky.
I think.
I will accept that as a friendly amendment.
Thank you. And, you ready for the next one, George?
Yes, sir.
On line 96, where it says causing vehicle collisions, is that an accurate reflection of what that position was there?
I think, I suspect that the word was conflicts.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Not collisions.
Yeah, I thought it was conflicts.
I think I said it.
Yeah.
I would also accept that as a friendly amendment.
Okay. Next is line 126, at the end where it says this swerving back, I believe that should be thus, T-H-U-S, not this.
Also accept that as a friendly amendment.
What, what line was that?
126.
126.
126, yes.
This being changed.
And thus swerving back.
Thus.
And just one more.
How's that, next?
Line 276, I believe that should read zoning commission meeting on September 18th, not September 19th.
Also accept that as a friendly amendment.
Anybody else have some comments?
I can't get on it in either one.
Yeah, I had two that I wanted to raise. One is, it's line 168, and just using the phrase not allowed in B sections, that puzzled me at first, what is a B section? Because it's not a term we generally use, and then a few lines down, it's a reference to a zone B2 based on, and it's a, it's a reference to business zones. But, just, I think that a consistent reference would be helpful if people aren't familiar with our minutes and our process. But B sections should, it's really referring to business zones, I'm inferring.
Yeah, I think the, um, B zone, zoning districts.
Yeah, right.
I would also accept that as a friendly amendment.
The other thing is on line 260, there's a sort of a quote from yours truly. It has, it presents, my thought says that Simsbury had done this before, and then it's followed by and it was not efficient. I, I'd like to see that last part of the thing struck, and it was not efficient. I can't remember saying that, I wouldn't have said it, I don't have personal knowledge of whether it was efficient or not. The town staff would be able to comment on that, but I wouldn't have said that. I would have said that it was done in the past because it was, and I think several was not that. But, the efficiency thing, no, it was not a discussion of the commission at the time.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think you said the word efficient, I don't think that's what you said. I don't know what you said, but that was it.
I will also accept that as a friendly amendment.
Well, I'm not done. 261, just the next line down. There's, referring to our chairman's statement that assign a butters notice for people within 100 feet. I thought we were sort of headed for discontinuing the reference to butters and just property owners within 100 feet. So, you don't get into the confusion.
A butter should be, should be deleted from that.
Be strictly.
I think that was the intention.
Yeah.
Also consider that to be a friendly amendment.
Oh, okay, there we go. That's enough.
Okay, did we have a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Okay. So, Dave Moore made the motion and seconded it. Bruce and Tony amended it. So, can we have a vote on the amended minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Abstained. Okay, they're approved, six, nothing. Okay, we have a public hearing open on application ZC 23-27 for an amendment to our Simsbury zoning regulations to allow mobile food vendors' accessory use. I think we discussed this earlier and decided that there wasn't an urgent thing to discuss, and tonight we have time. I think people in the audience and public has told us, and I think we agreed among ourselves, that restricting such public, uh, food trucks to restaurants and bars was, was really, not really appropriate, that other businesses should be able to have food trucks as long as we can have reasonable safety and so forth. So, I'll open it up to any comments that anybody has. I edited the minutes and handed, I'm not to people early minutes, the draft, and I, I just made it general business, any general business can have a food truck. And the only thing I added to the draft was that they can't serve alcohol unless they have a primary, uh, alcohol use permit for the property.
I'm sorry, Dave, are you saying that what I'm reading here is not the minute, the wording?
No, what I did was, I edited it.
The draft.
Yeah, edited the draft.
Remember what the word says that you started with?
Sorry, thank you.
Okay, you got it.
Okay, thanks.
We had decided that it, that we thought that it was inappropriate for us to restrict it.
I see what you're saying, I'm just, it wasn't what I was reading, so I was a little...
Right, I'm sorry.
I get confused easily, so that helps, thank you.
Dave, where was that changed?
The change was, where is it?
But here it says principal use for food beverage service establishments.
This is just for discussion.
Chairman has just handed it out, there was nothing in your Dropbox, staff did not produce any things, this is coming from the chairman.
This is just my attempt to do what we, I heard us say.
Remember what we originally, the original, when we went public hearing in July, it was, after you met with stakeholders, and then it was food trucks only at, only in your, your B districts, B1, B2, B3, and with food or beverage on site. Right? So, what the chairman has produced is, is an idea that, do you want to just limit it to that or expand it to allow them in, without that caveat, or allow them with, we would always recommend that you don't allow them on vacant lots, we would, we would recommend that you, you have a primary use on the site, but I guess I'd be open to discuss that, it just...
So, really, it sounds to me like all we're really regulating then is the safety of the truck, that their, that their, that the truck itself is regulated, that there's safety where it's parked, that it's, that's, that's really all we're addressing. We're not addressing anything about the location where it's placed, or who is being offered, or even number of trucks, I think. I think we've removed all of that.
Only one.
Oh, does it say only one?
They didn't change that.
Right, so...
That would change the location.
So, the draft, so remember, so the draft does have a numerical approach, so with one, staff was recommending that administratively, staff would review and approve a single truck at a location. We recommended that if there was more than one truck, that it would come to the zoning commission for a full review of the site plan.
Okay.
But, in, in the language, it does say, it does say, I mean, there are, there are parameters associated with placing a truck on a site, it can't displace minimum required parking spaces, it can't, it can't act to, to...
Correct.
... internal traffic, can't, correct, can't bring in internal traffic, it can't be a site distance issue, it's got, got it on the site, staff would review that as, as one. Now, certainly, we're, we're open to defer to you and bring all, all of the site plans to you, whatever you want to do.
But by changing it, what was presented today goes directly against what the stakeholders told us.
Correct.
Yes.
But then, I would be in favor of that.
Okay, I'm just gonna say, I know that you weren't here, but then we had business owners who came in who perhaps presented a slightly different perspective, so I think that's where this is coming from, that, you know, I guess that's the question, do we want to favor, um, Simsbury restaurants?
Yes.
Yeah, so I guess that's, that's the question.
I would say, just, I would just say one final thing, just, and then you guys can kind of talk amongst yourselves and figure it out. But, I would say that if you are going to go in the direction to, to allow, back to more, more generally in commercial districts, I think it's different than what we advertised, and I would recommend, just for transparency sake, to, I would, if that's the direction, make those changes, and then I would, I would hold no public hearing and re-advertise.
Yeah, I think you have to.
It's the right, it's the right thing to do, and I think because it's, it's beyond what was, it's more than what was originally advertised, I would certainly do that.
George, have we had any input from town, the town attorney on this?
Regarding what?
The proposed draft.
So, he's, so I send it to the, to the town attorney, he didn't have any particular comments on it?
I will say, there has been litigation in other jurisdictions, uh, saying that restricting food trucks is, as we had in the initial draft, is unconstitutional. So, I think we need legal counsel to review this, to make sure that it's, it violates competition, it's unfair, because we're treating businesses, we're treating different, we're treating businesses differently, without a legitimate reason.
So, I didn't have a long discussion with him at all about this because it didn't come up, but, I mean, our, our approach from the, from the planning side is that it's, I mean, it's a time, place, and matter, I mean, it's, I haven't seen that, that court case, but, I mean, it's, it's a legitimate time, place, and matter, and most Connecticut towns do regulate and regulate them with a, with an ordinance.
But do they say that only restaurants can have food trucks?
We're talking about the ownership of them.
Right, so the issue...
You're asking where they can go.
Yeah, yeah, the issue is, can we have...
I think that, that's problematic.
Yeah, can we have an ordinance or regulation that says only restaurants can have food trucks and not other businesses? Because that, there is an argument to be made, that that results in unfair competition, which potentially could be a violation of Connecticut.
I have not closed that question to the town attorney, I can do it.
Yeah, I think as part of our due diligence, we need to get input from town council, from the town attorney, to make sure that we're not putting the...
I had this sense that, maybe I'm wrong, but my, my sense of it was it was sort of sealing the borders, so that no food truck entrepreneurs could come in here and get a permit if they didn't own a, operate a restaurant or a bar. Did I misunderstand that, or is that what the original draft said?
That's the original draft.
That was the original draft, yes.
I'm not, I'm not supportive of that notion, I just, having had three months to think it over, I can't see that being the right thing for Simsbury.
Okay. And if we all agree that that's not the right thing for Simsbury, what we should do is close the public hearing, dispose of this draft, and ask staff to redraft the proposal and re-advertise it.
Perhaps tabling?
No, I would, so I offered a motion that I think, that I think works, which is I think you can direct staff to revise the draft that you have, pursue it to one, two, or three, however you want us to revise it, and then, and then re-advertise a public hearing with the new draft. I don't think you have to throw out the existing method.
Okay, all right, sorry.
You don't have to throw out the existing one?
You don't have to throw out the existing draft application that you have, you don't have to throw it out the door and start over. You could, but, you've got the bones of it.
Effectively, what we're doing is...
Tabling.
Is tabling it, or asking staff to modify it and re-advertising.
Pursuing to staff recommendations.
Okay.
But, I, we just want to be sure that the commission is, is intending a further review of another draft before they're scheduling a public discussion.
So, I would recommend us come back with a draft to you, about pre-October 2nd meeting, and then you can read it, and then authorize the public hearing. That wouldn't just go to public hearing.
Would the appropriate method would be then to table until October 2nd pending staff recommendations?
Well, you have a public hearing open, so you have to make a decision on what to do with that public hearing.
I would keep it open, if we're making changes.
Right, so... No, well, I mean, I technically think you can, you can close it because if, if...
But if we're closing it, then we're not allowing anybody to comment on the changes that we're making.
Even if you table?
We have another public hearing.
Yeah, but you, we would, we would re-advertise a whole new public hearing.
After October.
Yeah, yeah, November 20th is when it would be.
Okay, but, do, I want to, I myself would like to get rid of the restriction that it's only restaurants, and I think you agree with that.
Well, it's, I'm not thinking that general business is, is a good substitute, I'm thinking this restricting to entities that are already existing in the town, it's Simsbury, the only ones who can get permits for food trucks, I'm not on board with that idea, I don't care which entity's there, I'm not...
Limits competition.
Right.
But those are the taxpayers, Bruce.
Hold on a minute, say that again, I'm not sure I understand you.
Well, the current, the, the original proposal...
Yes.
As we still have, have told you, calls for a food truck operator to be the owner, or I suppose operator, but at least the owner is my understanding, of a bar or a restaurant in Simsbury.
Correct.
And I thought your notion for tonight was to change that from requiring that they be a bar owner or restaurant owner, to just be, in effect, an owner of any business.
Of a business in Simsbury, correct.
Yeah, yeah. So, we're on the same wavelength, but we're not sort of on the same side, you know. I'm, I'm not in favor of any restriction to active, you know, participants in the business community in Simsbury, limiting food truck opportunity of the future just to this small community. There are people that are doing, you know, good business out there in other towns who like to come here, but if we're gonna tell them, no, you're not an existing business in Simsbury, we're not gonna give you a permit, I don't think that's the right thing.
I don't understand what you're saying.
But we have tax payers.
I don't want to answer for the chairman, but I don't think that's what the chairman is saying. The chairman, I think, is suggesting that he would propose to allow food trucks at any business in the B1, B2, and B3 zoning...
Yeah, but I'm talking about who owns them, and who gets the permit, and not where they can actually go and park themselves.
Yeah, I don't think we technically ever specified who could own the trucks, but we said they could only be on the property of people who own restaurants, so it's kind of implied.
Right.
We never actually said it, so maybe we need to, one way or the other.
Well, I thought it was pretty clear.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, you know, I, I think it's...
So, I would move to table the consideration of...
Wait a minute, David, hold on for a minute, please.
Yep.
Um, let's clear up this. There's nothing that says that a food truck has to be owned by anybody in Simsbury. What it says is that the food truck sighting has to be at a business in Simsbury, and it has to be, has to be someone who permits it.
By sighting, that means for the permit for their one day selling hot dogs or whatever they're...
Yes.
It's for the permit for their more than 30 minutes, but forever location.
Yeah.
It, can we, I don't know, George, I'll ask you, can we favor local businesses, or encourage people to try local businesses first?
I don't think so.
Okay, okay.
It's, I'm sorry, I missed, maybe I misunderstood what you were saying.
No, I, I didn't think so, but I figured I'd, I just wasn't sure if it was possible to, while we can't say they can't bring in an outside business, we would encourage either directly or indirectly to say, we would prefer that you go with our, or, you know, we provide them a list of local food, you know, or whatever, I don't know, something that we can do to kind of provide, you know, a favor to our local businesses without specifically saying they have to use them, just a...
Then you're, you're talking about the food truck ownership.
Yeah.
Okay, no?
No.
Yeah, I think we've established I can't, we can't do that, so, okay, thank you.
So, the easiest way to say this is that instead of it, them only being allowed at bars and restaurants, it can be allowed at any commercial business, they can be at the Tractor Supply, or the Fitzgeralds, or the Home Depot, or the Lowe's, or what, any, any of those commercial businesses. That's what I think the chairman is saying.
But the, the ownership is available to, and, and a permit to...
There'll be no limitation on ownership.
Anybody who can meet the essential and the other requirements and behaviors.
Yes.
The person requesting the permit is the, the owner of the, the business, not the owner of the truck, right? It can be a different person, correct?
So, the way, the way, the way we would normally do that is that the, the food truck person can certainly be the applicant, requires signature as owner of the property.
Sure, right, so that, that makes sense, it's, um...
To stage the event, not to own it.
Correct.
Correct.
The owner's authorization that a food truck can locate on his or her property.
I, I want to agree with Jackie on this one, in that, like, because we're not saying who can and can't own one of these or run one of these trucks, all we're saying is we're regulating the land use or the use of which land is going to be available for these food trucks to operate on. I think it's totally reasonable for us to say, we've already set up that these restaurants are, are selling food, that's what this land is for, so if you want to add to that with a food truck, you know, go, go on, but I, we have not, we didn't plan for there to be, like, hot dogs sold at Tractor Supply, I don't think that's like, I, I disagree that that is necessarily something that we should be encouraging, especially since there's plenty of restaurants, you do plenty of really cool stuff with food trucks, um, and I think it's, I, I'm not a lawyer, but it does seem within our land use purview.
I think that's too restrictive, because at that point you're favoring one type of restaurant over another, a food truck.
Right, we're regulating what can be done on, on certain parts of the land, it's just...
Tony, we're not favoring, uh, these restaurants are paying taxes in Simsbury, that's why we're having this discussion, because you have a food truck that came into a non-restaurant spot and is now in competition for the same dollar that would go to a restaurant. Let me ask you a question.
But you also have a constitutional issue as to favoring one over the other, and if you have an equal protection aspect.
I don't like this word favoring, I, again, we have business owners in town who are being hurt, and they're the ones that are paying, they're the ones who live here, who are paying taxes, who have a business.
But so does Tractor Supply pay taxes?
Right, but they don't serve food.
And I'm not against the idea of restaurants being able to promote further aspects of their sales, it's just that we have to adhere to certain constitutional prerogatives, including equal protection, such that we have to have the language of the regulation or statute comport with constitutionality.
We allow food trucks, if you've, you know, caught up with all the discussions on it, at somebody's home, private events, there's certain places that they are very much allowed, but we're saying for our businesses, that's all this is limiting to.
I, I wouldn't take that out of it entirely, it's just a matter, because we're, we're obviously not supposed to be favoring one business over another, or, or necessarily taking into account who is, you know, the taxpayer, who isn't, it's just a matter of what is a good use for the, the land, and if we have decided that we want to sell food in these restaurants, that we've, they've already, we've already planned for that, all the traffic considerations, everything has already been considered for that, we haven't considered a line out the, at the, around the block for Tractor Supply selling hot dogs. I think that's the way we need to kind of think about the conversation, is what, and that's what, that's what we do, right? It's, it's, does this place all of a sudden have a radically different use than what it was originally intended for?
And if we were to table the application to allow for staff to speak to that, then we would be able to actually move appropriately.
So, I, I saw two things to offer, Mr. Moore, on, on this. The first thing is that you did continue the public hearing to tonight, and then maybe somebody in the audience wants to speak on the public hearing, that'll be up to you to decide whether to do that. Second thing is, I, I, I forgot this, and I think this is more helpful, that this is your application, this isn't my application, it's, this application is on behalf of the planning, or the zoning commission. So, technically, you could withdraw the application and direct staff to generate a new application based on your guidance tonight, and come back and start the process over, essentially, just like we did. We would do a draft, we would go to a public hearing.
I know.
That might, that might be the cleanest thing, but I would, if you, if you, if you do that, then there is no public hearing, you withdraw the application, it's your application, I, I think you can do that, I think, I think that is appropriate. Mr. Chairman?
I think that's a good idea, we should do that. As time goes, every minute we seem to get farther apart on this, so we should go back.
And so, frankly, if we, George, we end up going to a public hearing with broader language, then that language can, can get squeezed, and you, you don't have to have any public hearings.
Bruce, Tucker and I are pretty close. That never happens.
Yes, you are.
We think we're getting further apart on this.
I, I think we should let staff work this out, we gotta talk to the town attorney and make sure that we're not violating the equal protection clauses.
But as to the action for tonight?
Action for tonight is to withdraw this, direct staff to continue.
Mr. Chairman, are we gonna do the public hearing, are we gonna hear from the public, or no?
No. We're gonna withdraw the...
All right, we're just asking. Your application.
Let's withdraw the application, I'm sorry for having you come here, but...
Do you need a motion to second in the vote?
I'd like to withdraw. Direct staff to...
Simon, if you could just... Direct staff to provide us with the information necessary to provide a good zoning decision.
No, I'm looking, that way, it seems a little...
So, I, my, my...
The need might all defer.
My mind sounds like I'm... My mind sounds like I'm to, 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 to redraft with a more permissive approach that will allow food trucks without equivocation or caveat in business districts, in B1 and B2 and B3.
So we can then hear a public, have a public hearing and-
And then we would, well, I would bring a draft back to you in two weeks, then you can decide if you want to make changes to it, and then schedule a public hearing, which would be November twenty.
I think that's-
We agree on the agreement. Okay.
I agree with you.
Did we make that motion, Bruce, or David? David made that motion, okay, we have a second. Second by Bruce, and more discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Me, but I'm not seated.
Right. All right, it carries six, nothing. Um, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a site plan amendment, application twenty-three dash thirty-three, um, for site plan amendment to allow special events as an accessory use on the property at Two Tungus Road.
Yeah, I'm not sure who the applicant is, um, but I'll do my best to explain. Yeah, so, so it's a request, um, from, really from, from the owner of Present Company at, at Two Tungus, Two Tungus Road. Um, if you remember, several months ago, the applicant came in and processed a zoning text amendment that would allow special events in I districts, I1 and I2. Present Company in Terracotta happens to be in I1 district, and they have followed up with that site plan, so it is a site plan for special events, essentially weddings and other events associated with the Present Company restaurant. Um, it is a site plan, so it's not a public hearing requirement, the applicant has provided a site plan, really it's an existing condition with, um, with an explanation and location of where the tent would be, and that's what you have in your packet. I think the applicant, the application kind of intimated that it was really just for one wedding, it's not, we talked to the applicants, for the events at Present Company in that kind of open space floodplain area adjacent to Present Company in the parking lot. It is a floodplain area, uh, the structure is a non-permanent structure, so it doesn't require a special exception for structures in the floodplain. Uh, there's, there's seventy-five parking spaces associated there. This is an applicant, an owner who has had these kinds of events in the past, and we put them on a path to, 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 to really make those events and those kinds of things conform to the, to the zoning regulations.
Questions of the commission?
No, I mean, I'll say this is, it's a very smart use of the space.
Yeah.
There's no, there's no butting neighbors or anything that's gonna be bothered, it's a lovely site.
A lot of space there.
Yeah, a lot of space, it's really just going unused most of the time, so I think it's, I think it's a good use of the space.
I would totally agree with Diane.
I was surprised to see they didn't have that use for it anyway, I was, when they applied, I was like, oh, you've been doing that already, okay.
During a while.
Okay.
Okay, you're not seated, it's not a public hearing.
Sorry.
But we agree with you. Um, any other comments about it? Questions?
Move to approve application ZC number twenty-three dash thirty-three, as presented.
I'll second.
Okay, there's a draft motion here, David.
I will move the draft motion, uh, the motion, uh, that the zoning commission approves application ZC number twenty-three thirty-three of Jeff Lizzot, applicant-
Lizzot.
Lizzot, excuse me, and GSHPLLC property owner for a site plan to allow for special events as an accessory use on the property located at Two Tungus Road, accessors map K zero-four, block zero, two-zero-six, lot zero-zero-one, zone I one.
I'll second that.
The commission-
Oh, you have the whole thing.
The commission.
The commission finds that the application for a site plan meets the standards set in section five point seven, special outdoor sponsored events, section eleven, site plan requirements subject to the following conditions, one, that the property be developed in a substantial con, conformance with the site plan titled Proposed Tent, prepared by Dental Land Surveying and Consulting LLC, prepared by and dated for eighteen twenty-two, and two, an administrative zoning permit is required.
Thank you, you second?
I will second.
Second. Diane, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Closed? Abstained. It carries six, nothing. Jeff can come back in now.
Yeah.
Okay. George, you wanted to give us some updates?
So I brought back, I mean, you, you, again, I, I alerted your attention to the cannabis issue, um, going forward, depending on what happens in the referendum, like, I think I said at our last meeting, we would need to be ready to adopt something, and so I re, I resent you in the Dropbox, the, the retail portion of your deliberations from, from six months ago, and that was to allow, you remember kind of where we, where you as a group came, came down, is that we would allow, the, the draft suggested allowing retail cannabis in the B3 zone only, near the intersection of forty-four, two oh two Bushy Hill Road, within, I think a thousand feet is what the language said, um, and that the review would be permissible by special exception in public hearing, that there would be a limitation, a maximum of one in Simsbury. So that's, that's what I sent you, was the draft framework of what you had reviewed, just, you know, just, just broadly. Our B3, our, the B3 district i, is, is really the biggest catch-all retail district, retail commercial district, everything is allowed in B3. Some, you know, B2 is a little bit more permissible, B1 is even more permissible. But B1, B2, B3, all treat retail uses the same as, as site plan. So, the language was, was that, I have maps, if you want to kind of have a discussion, you know, be more broadly, if, if, if that's the draft that you, you don't want to go with, um, you would need to give staff direction in terms of where it would be allowed, how it would be allowed, and under what circumstances.
Okay, I think that I have-
It would only be if the referendum passes in the affirmative that the town of Simsbury citizens approve the retail sale of cannabis. If it fails, we don't have to do anything.
Right, but I have, I have this sense from comments made by commissioners, that we would like to discuss the location and the limitation of only one. Is that correct?
I would be interested in perhaps discussing the location, I'm fine with the one.
Okay.
I'm fine with the one as well.
I'd just like to get a review of the strategy here, and the others, the alternative scenarios that, you know, are in front of us, but I'm sort of headed for the question of, I thought what we were doing when we last saw this was we were considering convening a public hearing to consider the, the language at this stage. Their vote by the commission wasn't a vote for adoption of this particular thing as a new statute in Simsbury, or a new regulation, it was endorsing the language for public hearing, and after the public hearing, it would be for reconsideration and opportunity to change, personally, I think, yeah.
Got the referendum changed.
Yeah, so the, the only, the reason I'm bringing this to you right now is, is because there will, the referendum is a month from now, right, November? You only have one more meeting after that, so we, we would go to a public hearing after the rec, referendum, so this would-
Great.
But in order to be ready to go to public hearing, we would need to, to, you as a group would need to agree on language and an approach with which to advertise, we'll have to pre-advertise essentially, right? It will be advertised before we know the results of the, of the referendum, and we would just cancel the public hearing, in that case. So that's, that's why there, there needs to be direction and agreement on an approach and framework map.
Well-
Or, or now, within the next couple of weeks.
Then as I understand it, though, the public hearing could still be, well, here's the thing, I said, I think at the last meeting, if it wasn't that was the one before, that I don't intend to vote in favor of cannabis in Simsbury. No, it's just the way I feel. It's not gonna change next week or next month, or whatever, and, uh, I, when, if the vote is about location, after the decision is made by the voters, then cannabis is gonna be in Simsbury.
Sure.
Then the, the decision isn't about accepting cannabis in Simsbury, you have the responsibility for that decision in the long term, it's simply then a matter of location and restricting location, the number of places. So, um, yeah, and so I guess my concern is my own positioning on this thing, that if the understanding is, is, you know, now maybe I'm being overly sort of ambitious here, but if there was sufficient support that we could get six people to say, you know, this is, well, say five, anyway, all right, this is satisfactory to, to public hearing, but it's with the understanding where the, the public hearing occurs on November eighth or November fifteenth or whatever, there still is a full discussion of what's here, that this is subject to change, based on the input of the public hearing. We're not wedded to this.
Yes, always.
We are, essentially, because-
But I mean, you, you, you're wedded to the fact that if the referendum passes-
Yeah.
-cannabis is permitted in this town, your job would be to figure out how-
Where?
-it is permit, how, where, and why-
Right.
-in the process to improve.
Okay, but also, think about this, if cannabis is permitted, and we don't regulate it, we're in trouble, so we always can make a text amendment subsequent to the approval of this. So if we had a public hearing, we approved one site in the south of Simsbury, as we have in this draft, that to me is, is satisfies the requirement that we, we set up a, uh, permission, a permitted use, uh, regulation, and then subsequently, um, let's say the referendum passes ninety-five to one, um, and people want cannabis in every corner, they can sub, make a text amendment to the regulation and do whatever they want, but I don't, if we made a regulation that permitted it in six or seven places, and then after the referendum-
Oh, right.
-we didn't think that was right, I think it would be a mistake to do that. So I think that sticking to one in a specific location is probably the safest and best answer. So, I don't know, what do you guys think?
I agree, I agree.
I'm on board with that, yep.
That makes sense, Bruce, or?
Yeah.
You still don't with cannabis, but that-
In the worst-case scenario.
In the worst case. So can we say to staff, okay, let's proceed with this, let's proceed with the draft that we have, and put ourselves in the position to approve it on the seventeenth at a public hearing, in the window for which we have an opportunity to do that?
So, remember, your only regular meeting of November is November twenty, I think.
Right.
You always have a special meeting, but, you know, we would, November twentieth is when we would then hold this-
Anyway, I think that's the, the best approach.
Why wouldn't we hold it on the earliest possible date?
That is the earliest possible, you don't meet the, you don't meet that first, you don't meet the last week.
Right.
And we won't know whether we want to do it or not until after the election.
I was gonna say, it's, it's pretty-
We hope it's not a recount for two weeks.
We'll go across that bridge. So, so if, I mean, if that's the guidance, then I'm not gonna change anything, we'll just sit and wait for the, you know, the, the appropriate notice period, and then we'll, we'll get to noticing.
So then, oh, sorry, I was just gonna say, I'm fine with that, except if we wanted to discuss a different location, we would do that after the public hearing, is what you're saying?
I would suggest that, yeah.
Okay, that's fine. I would be curious to hear what people say anyway, so.
Yeah, we don't know, forcing, you're putting yourself in the position where we've permitted it in one restricted location.
Yeah, yeah.
We can then loosen it later.
Yeah, yeah.
But we, we're, we can't deny it.
Yeah, I would, the only thing I would caution, we'd be thinking you have a lot of flexibility in the timeline because you don't, because the, the law, if, if it passes, it is effective on the first Monday in December.
Right.
Don't have regulations in place on the first Monday in December, they are permitted as a matter of right in retail locations.
But if we set it up, we should be able to get this done on the twentieth, is what you're saying.
That's what I know.
We have to get it done on the twentieth, you have a choice.
All right, twentieth is the day.
Right.
Table as a result, or?
This isn't something to table.
No, 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 I think, uh, you make a motion to, um, I don't know that you need to do anything.
It's already written, you already have the text, okay.
Well, let me just raise, and that's probably pretty easy, but I'm, I'm not sure that the reference to within fifteen hundred feet of the intersection of One sixty-seven, what is the intersection?
The four-way.
Is that the centerline of each road where they cross?
Near intersection of forty-four, two oh two Bushy Hill Road.
No, what are you saying, where does that start?
More specific.
Where exactly?
Yeah.
What's an, what's an intersection?
Be the centerline of the roads.
Be the centerline, yes.
Would be the centerline.
Would be the centerline. Now, is that a common understanding?
Does that incorporate?
It's not necessarily a common understanding, but it is a legal understanding.
Yeah, because at that point, part of it is Avon.
Correct.
But does it incorporate the entire zone with that definition? Because it's kind of a moot point anyway, if it's only the last zone.
I have, I have a map, I just don't, I didn't bring it, I have a map that shows fifteen hundred feet from Sound Line. I can show it on, uh, show it to you in a second, I can do it, right, okay.
I think we're really putting in place a placeholder regulation.
Which is why I was asking whether or not we table.
No, table, he's-
Direct, direct staff to advertise for public hearing on November twentieth, the draft received this evening, that, that's probably a more appropriate motion.
Make that motion, to direct staff to advertise it for a public hearing on November twentieth.
That's the draft framework data, and I'll second.
Okay, I made the motion, second, further discussion.
I just want, I would just like to clarify that going with this, it still would be only one, um, location in Simsbury that would be allowed, but that open for discussion would be another part of Simsbury, another location.
No.
No, okay.
I mean, that would be at some time in the future.
Sometime in the future.
I would let the, I would let the industry some better.
Just maybe a different location.
This, this draft is, is, is direct to the, that, the, the intersection in the area around Simsbury Commons only.
And only one there.
In that location.
Okay.
Any subsequent things would have to be done by text amendment.
Yes.
Correct.
Okay, one other point, in, in six, the beginning of section three at the bottom there, um, I was trying to do a quick read tonight on exactly what the current regulation is, so I look at the town zoning regulations on the, the town website, and I can't find the section two-six A, two-six B, two-six C. I wonder if the thing got changed?
Oh, it's in the, oh, we, we changed it when we did the, the industrial part of it, I don't know if that's, I'll check.
Yeah.
Understood. Yeah, that was all front-loaded in the front of the, the zoning regulations when you adopted the moratorium, you moved all those definitions.
I didn't have time to look through that.
Yeah, okay, I'll check.
Just look through this.
I'll check.
I'm not the best, I'm a little bit critical of skills at finding things, anyway.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, passes, opposed? Abstained. Okay, a pass is six, nothing. Staff has, got some marching orders on that. Okay, FEMA.
I think, I think I sent you a, a memo that I sent to the town, uh, the town manager.
Yep.
Yeah, so we have, we've known this was a work in progress, FEMA has been working on the revisions to the flood maps in Simsbury and the greater Farmington Valley for several years, as early as twenty sixteen, they do this, you know, every, whatever, ten to twenty years, when they get better data, better analysis, better information, changes, and so, uh, FEMA is putting those maps forward, and they are available for review, and those maps affect property owners within our community, we've got about a thousand parcels in the flood zone in the town of Simsbury. We've got about 1,000 parcels in the flood zone in the town of Simsbury, so some is no change, there are some property owners that have more in the flood zone, there are some property owners who have less in the flood zone, so I'm letting, trying to let everybody know that, and we'll begin an outreach, letters to all those property owners, stuff on the website, notice on the website. This is a FEMA process.
Yeah.
It's not a staff process, but FEMA relies on the local government to get the word out. And we don't, we have, they have an appeal process that is straight through FEMA, has nothing to do with your local town staff, or your zoning regulations, the floodplain regulations, we adopt flood zone regulations, we adopt the maps as they are, and as they are changed by FEMA. We don't have any, we can't object to, we can object, you know, as a town to the maps and file appeals and do those kinds of things, but it really becomes an individual property owner exercise. So we're letting you know that, there is a timeline, they're not gonna be adopted until late 2024, so, or early 2025, but our job now is to let the community know about it, so we're just starting that process.
Do you send a letter to all the 1,019?
We're gonna, we're gonna review that process. We know upfront who is most affected, meaning people whose condition has gotten more severe, more in the floodplain. They send us kind of that grouping of that, so we'll start there. We'll start with, there's a couple of active projects that are, that may be affected as well, so we're gonna start really with a couple of active projects. But we'll get into that, and I'll just bring the updates back as appropriate, the zoning commission should know about that.
Yeah, as long as they know, the homeowners know.
So about the active projects, you don't know where they are right now?
Oh, I do, yeah, we know where the active projects are, sure.
And what will you be waiting for to share that with us?
Oh, yeah, two projects, oh, because I would tell you, because I just reached out to those property owners yesterday, so, let me let them know first, before I tell everybody. Be more appropriate, I think.
You heard it here first.
That's great, Dave.
Friends of mine are texting me.
And literally, this is all just happening like last week, FEMA's like, here are the maps, and so we'll post them online.
Bruce loves to tell everybody, you know?
Well, I think about when we were...
That's a very good question, I sounded like I was being coy, I was nodding.
No, I remember when we were trying to figure out what to do about the, the yet-to-be self-storage thing by Frank's Restaurant there.
That's one of the problems.
Yeah, the...
And that's one of the problems, but I've already talked to that problem here.
There was a change to the map, and they didn't know it, or it had never actually been made, so we didn't...
So we're trying to take extra efforts to make sure they do know.
Thank you. Well, you weren't here then.
I was not, not for that problem.
And what I remember reading in this is that FEMA decides, FEMA lets you, let them know that you don't like it, and then FEMA decides to...
It's a complicated process, you've gotta, I mean, you have to, you know, you've gotta hire engineers to do this, it's not just like, you know, you have to really do the math.
In certain instances, you also have to employ the Army Corps of Engineering, because waterways, et cetera.
Sure, absolutely, it makes it more complicated.
Anyway, anything else?
No, sir.
We didn't wear him out tonight.
I didn't do my job.
I think we need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close.